Call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the regular city council for the city of Breezy Point. The first order of business is the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here for the last, our last meeting of the year. This is the meeting where we cover our budget for next year. And the first order of business is the consent calendar. You have before you the council minutes for November 5th, as well as the special council meeting on November 13th. We also have the approval of claims totaling $488,223.83, which is electronic checks, 2193E through 2195E, and paper checks, 134780 through 134795, and 134798 through 134831, and 134834 through 134850. And we also have a donation that we would be accepting from the Pelican Lake Conservation Club. And we also have a donation from the Fletcher Foundation on behalf of the North Crow Wing County First Responders. Is there anything anybody would like to have removed from the consent calendar and discussed separately? Michael?
No.
Gary?
No.
Rebecca?
No.
Gary?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent calendar is accepted, and we will get thank you notes out to the, for the donation on Pelican Lakes Conservation Club and to the Fletcher Foundation on behalf of the North Crow Wing County First Responders. Next item is open forum. Anybody having, to, anybody desiring to talk to the city council, bring up anything they want. I will have to say that if you have any comments on the proposed budget, leave that for later, and we will have time for the public to respond on the budget a little bit later. So anybody wishing to come before the council, you may do so at this time.
Moi Wallers, 8871 Birch Lane, Breezy Point, Minnesota. On page two of the mayor's report on the sewer meeting, the mayor report never got in the minutes. You did make a response towards it at the meeting.
Was it a response during the mayor's, or was it during the open forum? I don't remember.
Either or, we can add, you made a comment, but I mean, it is part of the record, it's recorded.
Right, it's on the video recording, obviously.
Not written, according.
Yeah.
Okay. And page 23, of the sewer fund?
That's a budget question.
No, no figure.
Page 23. Okay, that's part of the...
Capital outlay, paragraph?
That's definitely part of the budget.
Yep, that's part of the budget. That'll come up later.
That's part of the budget?
Yes, that's, we'll have, that's going to be part of the budget presentation, which is a public meeting, and we'll have public comments during that portion.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for open forum? Okay, I'll close open forum, and the next item of business is the budget review. And I'll turn this over to Patrick for a summary of the budget and everything that's gone into it.
Can you be here, I'll turn off the search light?
Yep, that's fine. And just, so, we're gonna have the presentation first, and then the city council will have, ask questions of the staff, and then we'll open it up to public comments and questions, and then the, we'll entertain a motion to approve the budget.
Include your papers when you're on, yes, is it? Included in your packet is a document, starts out much like this page, talks about the 2019 proposed final budget in public hearing. The city council's, the issue chairman, the mayor, and the whole process of putting it on.
Yep.
This way the people in the public and the video can hear me then, too. So we're looking at the 2019 proposed final budget in public hearing. The city council adopted this process, started the process back in September. Staff's been working on it throughout the year. The first six pages are a summary of different activities that are gone on each different line item. What I've started with is page six in your report of the budget. Starts out with the Breezy Point budget presentation for 2019. We're looking at a 2019 total budget with a levy amount of $2,42,021. This is a $78,539 increase over 2018, which results in a 4% levy increase overall. Next page is a review of different revenues that we have. Obviously, the levy fund is a significant amount of revenue for the general fund dollars that the city's working with. There are other cemetery funds, EDA funds, TIF funds, and debt service funds that we have. Should note that the TIF funds that we have currently in place are all expired. We will have one going on for next year that has not started yet, due to the fact that they want to start after they're full billed out, so we get more tax dollars generated Next page is breakdown of expenditures. This is a little bit more detail for each of the, for the city council administration, general government, planning and zoning, public safety, public works, park and recreation, and then each of the different special funds that we have, including the current debt service. The next page is titled, "The City of Breezy Point, 2018 Finance: Improvements, Accomplishments, and Goals." And I should point out, council members have any questions at any time, they're more than welcome to ask those questions and stop for clarification.
Why don't you expand that a little bit, so it's a little...
I tried doing that throughout the presentation, and then each one gets a little different, so...
Oh.
Sorry if I have to do that each and every time, but, but we're working on it. By next year, we'll have that machine in place, working, and TV screens working, but not this year at this time. In summary, this talks about the levy increasing, $78,539. The tax rate, which I'll talk about in more detail later, is now 41.956, which is a decrease from last year's 42.862. Those numbers mean a little bit of information now, but as we go through it later, it'll be more significant for you. Talked about the different funds, the different committees that oversaw the budgeting process, the process that we used to get to this current look, process. Seal coating and roadways, of roadways occurred in 17, 18, and we plan on it for 19. I'm gonna lower this, so it's not so loud. And we're looking at about $200,000 again for 2019 for seal coating. Next page is our operating revenues. This is taking each of those accounts that you just saw and how they break out, where revenues come in, and this shows, you know, pretty significantly where property taxes are 78% of ours. And for those of you that don't have this, if you have internet, most of you do, it is also on the city website. You go to council meetings and pull up the council meeting for December 3rd, 2018, and all this information will be included on there. The next page is our 2019 operating expenditures, broken down by account. Public safety is the largest, but then you've got public works, parks, cemetery fund, and all those funds that we talked about under expenditures, and how that breaks down percentage-wise Now, most property owners ask the question, "How does that relate to my property taxes that I have to pay in my parcel?" So we go into a little bit of education about what affects your taxes. First of all, the city has a levy. There might be a referendum either at the school to construct a new school. Then there's the market value, homestead exclusion, which is exclusion on the value of your property, depending on the value, lower the more exclusion, the higher your value, up to $400,000 where there's 0% exclusion. Then there's the overall market value of the community, the value of your property, I'm sorry. Changes in your taxing jurisdiction's total value, and classification changes. Those are all complex terms. I'm told that the state of Minnesota has the top, in the, we're in the top three of the most complicated taxing processes for everyone, for all states in the country. The next page, I do a little bit of discussion about tax capacity explanation, talking about the $76,000 again, and then how that declines as it goes through. Gives an example of a $76,000 property, residential, and then, here, we'll even go up to the next level. So if you had a $76,000 home, your top tax capacity value for, at 100%, would be $456. And then it gives an example, again, for commercial properties right below that. What that means for the city of Breezy Point. Here's a historical review of 16, 17, 2018, and then where we're at in 2019. And so that's the bottom one, down here. And what we're looking at is our city's total market value is $482 million and some change. Taxable market value excluding homestead exclusion is at 464. That means our tax capacity is $4,863,523. The city, if you adopt the resolution tonight, as we did in the preliminary, will have a levy of $2 million. That makes our tax rate at 41.9. On the very bottom of the page, I talk, try to explain a little bit more. We talked about how to word this at the finance committee level, to better explain it, because it gets a little confusing. But for 2019, even though the levy was increased by 4%, the city's portion of property taxes will actually decrease. That happens because the increased assessed value was at a higher rate than what the city council budget was proposed at. So we'll talk about that a little bit more, but in all efforts, the city council's doing a good job of providing a fair budget and maintaining taxes. The tax capacity trend that I'm showing you here is that since 2014, 15, the city's tax value has been increasing, we're up, as I talked about, to $4,800,000. You will note, on the tail end of the recession, our value was higher. This, again, are factors from the county, but it's important to note that as that process works through. That does have an effect on our tax rate. So back in 2011, our tax rate was 33.9. With the values dropping, you see our tax rates went up, and that has to do with the fact that we're just transferring the dollars to the same amount of properties, but at a 2019, how your tax dollars are spent in the city of Breezy Point. 43% is to the city, 32 to the county, school districts 13, and other is less than 1%. Now, the mayor asked for this one way back in September, and it takes time to generate those numbers, but this, these are the numbers you guys are looking for, mayor, and they're gonna be all right here, for residential homes and for commercial properties here. And I'll try to enlarge that, so it's easier to see those negative numbers. So if you had a $75,000 home, $76,000 home, you would actually see a $2.40 decrease in your city's share of the property taxes. Now, that assumes one major factor is that the value of your house didn't increase. As the city council learned earlier this year, all properties in the city of Breezy Point essentially went up 5%. So it's probably a small increase on your property for the city of Breezy Point. And that goes, same for residential, commercial properties, 100,000, 2 million, they saw a To give you an idea of where Breezy Point lies with the other cities, we, this is a historical chart, just like all the other ones. You've got Pequot, Niswa, Jenkins, Ironton, Crosslake, Crosby, Breezy, Brainerd, and Baxter. Breezy Point is at 41.95. Everyone has this discussion about Baxter and their low tax rates because of all the commercial they have. Well, they're still at 52.99. Again, that's almost 10 points higher than Brainerd. Our neighbors to the north, Crosslake, are at 30%. They seem to be the lowest. Again, it's high-value properties that's helping them with their lower assessment. Excuse me. On the last page of my presentation is the actual resolution that we'll be asking council to approve. In the resolution, it identifies the increase in tax capacity value of $250,000. It defines the total tax capacity, and how we've had a city increase of 4.5, I'm sorry, 5.437. Then talks about the tax rate. Oop, I gotta turn to the right page. Sorry about that. The resolution actually talks about the finance committee meeting back in August for the preliminary levy, that we talked about the preliminary levy being $78,539 more. The finance committee reviewed it just recently, just last week, and they are still recommending the dollar amount. The budget included, does include a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for all employees effective January 1st. And then it breaks down the levy. We have a levy of $2,42,021, general fund, EDA, cemetery, and the refunding bond there. Included in your packet is a variety of line items, which we went through in the past, so I won't go through that again. I'm available to answer any questions. I understand, obviously, Moi asked some questions, but if you're willing to address those, after the council has any questions with me?
Yep. Council, any questions to Patrick? Michael?
I have none at this time.
Gary?
No.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Any comments?
Gary?
No.
Okay. So I'll open it to the floor, to anybody that has any questions on the budget or the budgeting process. No questions? That's good to hear. Moi, did you wanna, your...
Now would be the appropriate time for your question.
Do you wanna have a question?
But you wanna get up to the mic, so they can hear ya?
Just like open forum.
You said page 23, Moi?
Said something on page 23.
8871 Birch Lane, Breezy Point. Page 23 on the sewer fund?
Is that the page there you were thinking of?
23?
Yep.
Okay. What was your question, sir?
At the ending, "To be accomplished in..."
So the very last line of that. So we're talking about the bypass there, and we, it should've said 2019. We anticipate it being accomplished. That's the bypass, weather, water, high levels, and some other things, just, we couldn't get it done. And I think when I wrote this, we still might've been making the decision on that, and I forgot to finish that, so...
That should be in.
That's a good catch.
2019.
Yes, sir.
Just a little correction, thank you.
Yep. That won't affect the levy, the resolution, but it is a budget issue for the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, basically, we've already accounted for those dollars, and they've been budgeted in for 2019, which is, just overlooked.
Thank you.
Good catch, Moi. Any other questions from the public? None appearing? I'll call the question, all those in favor of accepting the budget as, as written?
Do you wanna make, have a motion first?
That's what I was gonna do. So, oh, that's right. I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution 18-22.
Go move.
Is there a second? Further discussion?
I was, I was interrupting, when I was reading through it, Kevin, there was a real large insurance increase in 6,000, and it said on there that you were gonna look into it. Did you find anything? Okay.
Rebecca?
Okay.
All those in favor of accepting the budget, Resolution 18-22, please say aye.
Aye.
The budget is accepted for 2019. Next item is the mayor and city council reports. Last month, I talked about the IDI assessment, which is the... Which is the, the intellectual development inventory, it's called the IDI assessment, that Region 5 is having done for the, for the area, and Breezy Point has agreed to participate in this assessment. I have sent names to Region 5 to participate. I've sent it, letters out to various members of the business community, as well as the staff at, in the city of Breezy Point will be taking, so all the council members will be participating in this as well. We will have dates. Basically, the next thing that happens is you'll get an email from Region 5 with a link to the assessment. It's basically, it's a Survey Monkey type of assessment. Doesn't take very long to complete. And then, once the surveys are in, we will, they will be evaluated, and then we will have a review of the results, and we have three days that we can have for the review. The first date will be January 28th, from 3 to 5. The second date available will be January 29th, from 1 to 3, and the third date will be February 5th, from 3 to 5. And all of this will be part of the email that you get from Region 5. So you'll be looking for an email coming from either Stacy Headley from Region 5, or Dawn Espy from Region 5. And that will give you the link. It's a very, I've taken the assessment as part of the pilot program at Region 5, and it is really a very good assessment, and we will be learning a lot from that. So, and the next thing, I know we've all been anxious to hear, is the committee assignments for next year. Typically, this is our first order of business in 2019, the first, actually, it's the second order of business. The first one will be the swearing-in of the newly-elected officials, and then the second is approval of the committee assignments. And I know everybody's always sitting on the edge of their chairs, waiting for the new committee assignments coming in, but things are working very well this year, and I don't want to change committee assignments, because we have a lot of things going on with the comprehensive plan. So I'm keeping all the committee assignments, so I won't have to be calling everybody over the holidays and telling them what their committee assignments are. They will be the same as next year. Another thing that I've been hearing a lot of is a lot of compliments on how well the city's being run. I've heard really good things, not only about the administration, the clerk's office, public works, police. I get these compliments quite often from people just saying, "Oh, you're the mayor?" Well, this is really a good thing that I've heard, you know, about what's going on in the city. So I'd like to take this point and publicly thank all of our workers here, you know, at the, at the city, because not only does our budget show that we're doing a really good job, but the performance that we see throughout the city is, I'm really, really proud to be a part of this city. So, comments or things to report? I'll start with you, Michael. Anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Rebecca?
I think most of the council knows this, but just the comprehensive plan survey has been extended, so you can take it until December 10th now. We've pushed it out to some additional groups of people, such as the parents at the school, the elementary, at least for sure, the elementary parents, so until December 10th. And I'm not sure if this has been announced already, but Deb has gotten a Breezy Point Facebook page up and running, so if you're not afro, if you're on Facebook and you haven't friended the City of Breezy Point Facebook page, you should, because it's great, and thank you, Deb.
Gary, anything to report?
I could, I can't, so I won't. No. Company won't allow that.
I wanna piggyback on what the mayor had to comment on. I've received the same, probably not from as many people as you do, but, but I've heard nothing but good things. So my compliments, for you and the rest of my colleagues.
Committee reports. Anything to report from the various committees? I'll start with you, Gary.
No, sir.
Okay. Rebecca, personnel, finance?
Nothing.
Okay. Gary?
No.
Michael?
No.
Things are running smoothly. Administrator and staff reports. We do have, if you remember, we have an RFP out for the airport lots, 47, 48, and 49. We actually did have two bidders come in. You have the results of the bidding process in your packet. We had, like I say, two bidders. The first one was, let's say, he didn't really follow the bid process, in that he just wanted to bid on one of the lots, and the bid was for all three lots. So that was a problem, was problematic right there. The other bid followed the process and was for all three lots. You see a memo from the administrator as far as recommendation. The recommendation is that we would be looking at the, accepting the, the larger bid for $15,000, $15,100. And then he also has essentially a $5,000 surety bond that would be put in, so that if he meets the, his committed milestones, that $5,000 would be refunded. And I'll open this to discussion at this point. I'll start with you, Michael.
I think what the administrator has for a recommended motion is adequate. I'm excited to see what can be developed on those lots, so, looking forward to it.
Gary?
Likewise. It's gonna be used by a family that's aviation-oriented with an airplane, that's gonna build a nice hangar with a luxury apartment, and I think it's wonderful.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yeah, no, I agree. It's great.
Gary?
I agree.
So at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the bid from the, before I get my names messed up here. The, the second bid from Aaron Baruch for $15,100, and then in accordance with the recommendation from the city administrator to have the $5,000 surety bond associated with it. Is there a motion to that effect?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Further discussion?
Um, I, what, the way I'm understanding is the actual counter that we were gonna be doing would be an additional five thousand to make it twenty thousand, one hundred as a purchase price for the lots. And then upon completing and handing in a building permit, a five thousand dollar deduction off that building permit was gonna be granted. This is a little bit different than the fifteen-one plus the five thousand assurance bond, in my belief, because if he doesn't fall through those, that twenty thousand, one hundred, he can still own those properties.
Okay.
So I'm just confused on the surety bond, but...
Yeah.
If the administrator tells me it's the one and the exact same, then I'm fine with it, but if it is different, I'd like...
Am I misstating that, or?
I was not seeing it as a surety bond.
Okay.
Seeing it as a counter offer of twenty thousand, one hundred dollars, and then a refund of five thousand if you're paying with a building permit.
Okay.
Effective September first. Not a surety bond.
Okay.
I know what you're trying to explain it, but I think it's better if we just said our counters twenty thousand, one hundred.
Our counters twenty thousand, one hundred and...
Five thousand, refund.
Five thousand, refunded. Okay. So where am I standing right now?
You have a motion on the floor and a second.
Motion on the floor and a second, so we'll withdraw that motion for the way I stated it, and then replace it with the counter offer of twenty thousand, one hundred with the five thousand to be refunded on the building permit. Is that how we want to state it?
Do we need the first and the second to withdraw the motions first?
Be appropriate.
Okay, so a motion to withdraw the previous motion?
The person who first made the motion, and the second didn't have to withdraw.
Okay.
So, so who else? I withdraw the first motion.
And then the second was from Gary? Okay.
I will throw that.
Okay. A little confusing. So the, the motion is to counter offer at twenty thousand, one hundred with the, what, the five thousand dollar refund if a building permit is taken out within, prior to September first, two thousand and nineteen.
Also moved.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Okay. Further discussion? Michael?
None. Thank you for clarifying that.
No, I have none.
Rebecca?
None.
Gary?
No, sir.
All those in favor of offering a counter proposal of twenty thousand, one hundred with five thousand being refunded if the building permit is taken out by September first, two thousand and nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The counter offer proposal is approved. Liquor license renewals. This is the end of the year, and we have our standard renewal of the liquor licenses, depending on everybody passing all of their background checks and all of the legal ramifications. We have liquor licenses for the Commander and JJ's, the Breezy Point Resort, Antler's Restaurant, Deacon's Lodge, Pelican Square, and Billy's Bar and Grill. I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses for the above, or for the listed establishments for two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
And subject to all of the compliance requirements.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Michael?
Chief, any comments?
They'll have it for him.
Okay. So all of that is taken care of. Gary?
No.
Rebecca?
None.
Gary?
None.
All those in favor of approving the liquor licenses for the listed establishments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The liquor licenses for two thousand and nineteen is approved. And then we have a, a contract update for the city planner. The city planner, Jerry Bonsek is our city planner. He is a contract city planner, and we are proposing to increase his pay rate to forty dollars per hour from the current thirty-five hour, thirty-five dollars per hour. We have, we have the, the existing contract sent out, and then we have a, a codicil to that contract that will state the, the new pay rate, and it will become part of that existing contract. I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract revision for our city planner.
So moved.
Is there a second?
One second.
Further discussion? Gary, I'll start at your end.
Briefly. I've worked closely with Jerry since he's been on board, and the planning commission, and they do a superb job. They really do. That's all.
Rebecca?
I don't have any comments.
Gary?
Michael? I think Jerry's value is well worth it. I think if we were to look at getting somebody else in-house, we'd be looking at hiring full-time. The pay would be larger with benefits, and with Jerry's expertise that he brings to the table, I think it is a very good benefit for us here.
Well said.
That is very well said, and I fully agree with what you're saying. All those in pros, all those in favor of the proposed contract amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The contract amendment is completed, and I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. And this will be our, our next meeting will be the, after the first of the year. So I want to thank Woodstead Smith &amp; Nolting for the candies. I'll have a box of candies up here, and feel free to come up and help yourself, and thank our resident engineers to, who I'm sure slaved over the kettle making these things. Ooh, this is really good.
Just a joke.
So, just come up and help yourself. Meeting's adjourned.
Well said, well said, Michael.